All right. Good evening and welcome to the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three regular meeting. Of the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. Just one moment while we fix a little bit of an audio on here. Just one. All right. So sorry, everybody. All right, I'm gonna start over. Good evening and welcome to the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three regular meeting of the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. I am Joe LaCava, Chair of the Board and the Representative for the City of San Diego. Welcome to the members of the public, the community power staff and board members joining us in person today. Now call the May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three regular meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power to order. Kimberly, will you please call roll?
Yes, City of San Diego Representative.
LaCava present.
County of San Diego Representative. Imperial Beach Representative. La Mesa Representative.
Aaron present.
National City Representative.
Monique present.
Tula Vista Representative.
McCann present.
Ensenitas Representative.
Kinsey here.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, Kimberly. All right, let's do our pledge of allegiance. And if you're able. Face the flag hand of your heart. Let's begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. That you do the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Kimberly said we have a present, so first up on the agenda is special presentation and introduction. So we do have one introduction today. We'd like to introduce and welcome CEO, Community Engagement Manager. She is here in person and we will give her a moment to introduce herself. CEO.
Hello. Not sure if you can hear me, so I'll just go ahead and say thank you so much for allowing me to be here. My name is Yomadis Crespo. I go by CEO. I am the new Community Engagement Manager here at SDCP and I'm really excited to be able to grow the team in the coming months to really make sure that we are really improving and professionalizing what we're doing in terms of engaging the community and really doing really meaningful community outreach. So, thank you.
Welcome. As a reminder, close second, we'll follow today's regular meeting agenda and, excuse me, we will report out at the conclusion of the closed session. Are there any items to be added, withdrawn, or reordered on the agenda?
No, there are not.
Or next up, non-agenda public comment. I want to note that written public comments submitted before the board meeting were emailed to all directors prior to the board meeting and will be posted on the website at the beginning of the meeting. Kimberly, do we have any non-agenda public comment?
Yes, David Peterson is here to speak on the slides that he submitted and have been posted on the website.
Thank you, sir.
You have three minutes, Mr. Peterson.
Hey, when I learned about a month ago at the last board meeting that we were gonna inherit some PGE PPAs possibly. I started thinking, well, that's gonna have an impact on our strategic plan. So what I'd like to do today is make some recommendations for the plan. I assume that either Topaz or Agua del Monte were available. Both are PGE PPAs. Today, both farms were designed back in the twenty ten, twenty twelve period. They generate maximum power in the year where the great big spring and summer peak, but their winter power no size. Eventually, we're gonna take care of that, we hope, with long-term storage. Realistically today, that's power makeup in the winter is gonna require heat and it's gonna require fossil fuel power. And that'll last until the twenty forty. So there's, we could modify the designs of those two, those two farms by upgrading and removing alternate east-west rows and adjusting their panel slope to fifty-eight degrees for Topaz, fifty-four for Agua del Cartel. We would remove, remove panels or be relocated to a new farm. Construction could be done over several spring seasons, so where we have lots of extra power. This kind of thing provides USA jobs, of course. Either site could then be upgraded to a hybrid form farm, which is good friendly. And finally, in the hybrid form, of course, you have low, you have maximum, it costs the most to generate power because its capacity factors low and that can be done easily with batteries. So with a slow modification, both sites could then need the hundred percent renewable requirement by two thousand five. With minimum over generation. Thank you more for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else, Kimberly?
There are no additional non-agenda public comments.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate the public participating in our meetings. Go on to the consent calendar. In addition to our usual monthly reports, we also have, and I'm very excited about this, the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the December sixth, twenty twenty-two, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, and the January twenty-third, three, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. Well, thank you, Kimberly, for all the good work. We're also considering approval of a fourth amendment with NYNS printers for printing services, a first amendment with full moon strategies for government affair services, a third amendment with Futura Energy Group for recruiting services, and the annual approval of updated voting shares. Are there any directors that would like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
No, I would like to make motion to approve the entire consent calendar.
I would second that, Mr. Chick.
No more. Okay, no other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. That passes unanimous. Now move on to item thirteen, which is approval of the Community Power Plan, and I'll turn it over to Colin Santulli to present this item. And you're ready, Colin?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you all for hearing about the Community Power Plan again. I'm all by now. We appreciate the opportunity to present for approval, the Community Power Plan, and I'm gonna pass it over to Nelson Romelli, who's been the Program Manager and Lead for this over the last four months. And he deserves the credit for getting us here. Nelson, please.
Really weird having a microphone in front of you. Much. Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Chair. Thank you for being here and allowing us to present on the Community Power Plan. I think for as, for the past few months, we've been talking about the Community Power Plan and we've been presenting various program types to the Board at the Strategic Session in April, as well as throughout the previous board meetings. And so we are finally here at the final step of consideration for approval from you all. So I wanted to briefly start by summarizing quickly all of the work that we've done, because this has been a nine-month effort, a really long effort to get to this point. So we started with conducting a community needs assessment that engaged the community members at large. This involved doing listening sessions with community-based organizations with the help of these organizations, doing interest group stakeholder interviews with a number of organizations that represent or and serve the community at large by doing workshops with the general public and then doing workshops that were specifically tailored to businesses and commercial customers. This also involved, that's not shown here, it involved a lot of engagement with you all, with the Board. Many of your predecessors, some of you which are still here on the Board. It also involved a workshop with the Community Advisory Committee and then various meetings with STCP staff to understand what the organizational priorities were as well. The next step to that was conducting this community survey. And to our knowledge, it is one of the most successful regional surveys that has been done with the community, having received over twenty-nine hundred validated and completed responses from our service territory. We actually received way more than that throughout the region. We got somewhere closer to five thousand. But we had to take some of those if they were not completed or if they were in our sister CCA's territory. So during that engagement, during the community needs assessment, we learned from the community that a lot of times public agencies come to the community and they ask all these questions, they take all this information, and then it kind of goes into a black box and nothing is reported back out. So one of the things we really wanted to do to change that paradigm was report back out to the community of what we've learned during the community needs assessment. And so we held a series of another round of listening sessions where we reported back to the community what we had heard and gut checked that again and ensure that we were hearing the correct things. And so in Q four, in the fall and winter of last year, we spent the majority of the time doing a program market assessment and developing the program prioritization framework. And this was a way for us to be able to take all the information that we learned during the community needs assessment and and start to evaluate and programs based on their ability to meet organizational and community priorities. And so that led us up to this year where earlier this year, we did a piece, a public draft of the Community Power Plan for review and public comment. We did host a workshop where we walked through the details of the Community Power Plan for the general public, encouraged the general public to engage throughout the process and give us back the feedback and made it quite easy for them to literally click and comment on specific sections of the Community Power Plan. We received quite a few comments and suggestions from the community at large and receiving over seventy, over seventy different points of feedback throughout the plan. So it was really successful and we got a lot of really good notes that we took into, that we took into the plan and edited accordingly. And so now that we're past the public comment period, now that we made updates to the CDP, we are now here with the final draft before you. So if you go to the next slide. So this is what the Community Power Plan looks like, the cover page. And I wanted to start here because I wanted to give a shout out to City of La Mesa for letting us use their amazing photo for the cover page. So the Community Power Plan is a five-year strategic plan for the types of customer programs that we need to offer or that we should offer to our customers. Next slide, please. So the the plan is is made up of seven chapters. I'm only showing five here, but because the first chapter is an introduction of who we are as an agency and the last chapter is just a conclusion. But the bulk of the plan really is on these five chapters, which is Chapter Two outlines all of the information that we did for the community needs assessment that I described a little bit earlier. Chapter three is describes in detail that program market assessment that we did so that the public is able to see how we approach that market assessment and how we organize the various programs that we look at into its various components. Chapter four describes the approach that we took and to the program prioritization framework of how we took all that information and started to evaluate programs. And then Chapter Five is all about the the various funding sources that both our customers have access to, but also funding sources that the organization as STCP can leverage to launch programs. And so the the Chapter Six is really the the main part of the plan as it lays out best practices for program design, the program phasing strategy that you all saw earlier this year, details about each of the thirteen program types that's included in here. That includes a description, the priorities that are being addressed to that program type, the recommended market sector, the associated benefits of that program type, and some designing and funding considerations. So within the plan, I wanted to showcase these two pages. We actually have a couple of pages specifically dedicated to our communities and the commitment that we have made towards them to dedicate fifty percent of a program's non-administerative budget to participation from consent to the extent that the funding source allows us to do that. And we also have a page dedicated to workforce development and our commitment to support a just and equitable development of a clean energy workforce as well. The matching of the jacket to the color of the chapter is by coincidence. Next slide. And so here's just a summary of the thirteen program types that we have in the plan organized into the short term and midterm. Again, the short term is really about us focusing on things that we can do immediately to help our customers. So this is energy awareness and education, helping them with application assistance, offering our disadvantaged communities green tariff and community green, community solar tariff programs to them, launching the pilot projects, which you will hear about in the next item, as well as offering a couple of grant programs to test out some innovative ideas with CBOs. In the midterm, we're really focused on, as you say, in the midterm, that is when we will reach our reserve targets. And so that's when we start to focus more on building electrification-type programs, distributed energy resources-type programs, transportation electrification, and energy efficiency with the coming online of the San Diego brand or whatever name we decide to give the agency. Next slide. So I just wanted to end by saying that we presented the Community Power Plan to the Community Advisory Committee at their May eleventh meeting and they unanimously voted to recommend to you all, to the Board of Directors, that you all approve the Community Power Plan. If you approve the plan tonight, what the next step will be is for us to take that final document. We have the translations ready in Spanish and Tagalog and we will upload that to our website. And we will update the website to make it easier for people to read and skip to specific chapters. And this summer, we're going to be uploading a portal with all of the survey data that each of the member agencies can go in and start to dig in and size and dice data to learn more. So the Community Power Plan as a strategic document is really gonna help Colin and I and the rest of the organization guide in the selection and development of programs that fall within each of those program types. And we are expecting the plan to not get stale by up to five years to make sure that whatever program activity we're doing is still aligning with community as well as our own organizational goals. So with that, I think we can turn it back to you, Chair.
Right. Well, thank you, Colin and Nelson for the presentation and for your very, very good work. Kimberly, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, Serena Pelka is here to speak. Serena, you have.
Ready. Hello, my name is Serena Pelka, Policy Advocate with Climate Action Campaign. Built into our foundational mission was the fight to develop community choice energy in the San Diego region as a way to provide a hundred percent renewable energy to our communities with local control and local supply. We are really proud to have spent the last five years working alongside many of the members of the community to make this vision a reality and see SDCP grow into a regional climate leader. We support the approval of the Community Power Plan and are really thrilled to see it complete after the extensive community engagement conducted, incredibly dedicated work by staff, and to have a plan to guide local programs based on community needs and gaps in program offerings. With that, and with so many meaningful programs identified, it is essential that detailed timelines and benchmarks be added. We know that when plans lack clear goals and timelines, delays in implementation are inevitable. Given that SDCP is now able to project its revenue, our recommendation is that the CPP be paired with an implementation plan that includes details on what percent of local power SDCP is aiming to be and a timeline for that goal so the community may more easily be accountable to concentrating program benefits locally. We will continue to work together to ensure timely investments are being made locally to build climate resilience and the clean energy system that our communities deserve. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
There are no additional public comments.
If you can. Thank you, Serena, for showing up. So I'll turn it over to the Board members. This is being offered to us for consideration of approvals. I'll put forward comments and a motion.
So it's a great plan. It's really accessible and easy to read and it's been a huge effort. I've undertaken it in some of the small communities around the county and our jurisdictions. I guess I'm looking for a little bit more information about, we received a comment from the Climate Action Campaign about implementation. So can you describe a little bit about how, where the implementation plan from this agency meets with the implementation plan of our individual jurisdiction? So how do we go from this great plan to implementing it for all of our cities and agencies?
Yeah, happy to take that question up. We, we do have a monthly meeting with your staff from each member agency where we get into the nitty-gritty on each implementation action from your own climate action plans. This plan was intended to kind of set guardrails for us, so we were not looking to identify program design or implementation timeframes. The, the only timeframes we we sought to identify were those tranches of short-term, midterm, and long-term. And those are mostly driven by funding. So all these programs are gonna require funding. I'm gonna talk in a few minutes about some pilot programs where we're seeking external funding, but for the most part, the programs that we're looking to launch are gonna require internal funding and we need to hit our reserve cards before we can do that. So a lot of our, a lot of the time for programs is dependent on funding. Even with external programs, we do typically see twelve to eighteen months timeframe for setting up large-term programs. And that's the regional energy network that we're talking about. Some of the smaller pilot projects, we can see program funding developed in three to six months. But until we identify external funding sources, which is the grant timeframes, it's hard for us to identify specific implementation timeframe that were suggested. But we are closely aligned with the member agencies and their staff on a monthly basis. And so as we shift from planning into implementation, we'll have more opportunities to kind of get more into the weeds. Sure.
And any other board comments or we do need a motion of the board?
I will make the motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, and. I'll offer a couple of thoughts to get to that. Nelson Allison deserves a little thanks too. It's all that good work. And just to put a finer point on the public comment and what. Remember Kinsey was. The bigger effort that we're doing in terms of energy procurement for towards our one hundred percent renewable is a little bit mistaken from the good work that this Community Power Plan will do, where we're actually trying to help individual benefit from accessing, whether it's electrifying their house, whether it is exposing them to lower rates than we would otherwise be charging. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, there are some areas of overlap. One specific program is our disadvantaged community green tariff program. That is a generation program that provides lower rates. So we are talking about trying to increase local development with that program, but overwhelmingly, the custom energy programs are gonna be at the resident or business level. There's a whole separate effort that buyer bosper, our Managing Director of Power is overseeing for a local infill plan. That's underway through new staff that he added at the beginning of this year. So yeah, completely separate.
All right, unless there's any other comments, we do have a motion and a second to move the staff recommendation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes six zero. I noticed that Member Gary is now speaking on the board. That passes six zero. So don't go away. So we'll move on to item fourteen. This is only an update on our pilot programs that you introduced.
Take it away, Colin. Thank you. Yeah, as a public comment mentioned, there is worry that when strategic plans get adopted, they will sit on a shelf and no action will be taken. And so it's not an accident that the following item is an update on pilot programs that we're looking to launch immediately. And so the pilot programs were mentioned by Nelson as part of our short, short-term program ideas, and we wanted to come share, next slide, please. Share some initial concepts with you. So we'll run through about half a dozen concepts with the intent to show you kind of the variety of different actual program types that we think, excuse me, programs we'll be thinking about. The next slide. As I mentioned, Nelson talked through the general categories of potential pilot programs. These are aligned with the midterm program types that he just. Next slide. The intent of today is we go through a couple of these concepts that we're considering. Some of these concepts are more developed than others. Some we have grant dollars that we're pursuing right now and in others, we were, as Eric's gonna cover here shortly, we're looking to for a fund for pilot programs in this coming budget year. So they're in various development, but we do anticipate some of these parts being launched as early as this summer. So the first one we wanted to review, we mentioned this at the strategic planning session. This is an idea that has been successful in Northern California and the market barrier we're trying to address here is that we want to see more heat pump water heaters in our territory for climate benefits for, for bill reasons. But there's a big market issue, or I should say, fundamentally, when a water heater goes out, typically the customers want to replace that water heater immediately, like within a day, within a day, so they continue to serve their needs of their family. An agency in Northern California has identified a loner program that will provide a water heater the day of to kind of pay care of that emergency failure. In the meantime, the customer could work through the electrical upgrades and the permitting that will be required to consider heat pump water heater. These heat pump water heaters require electrical hookups and they may require upgrades to the panels and most customers don't have time to do those upgrades if they're trying to swap out a heater immediately. So this concept would, we would work with the vendor to have emergency water heaters on hand and provide those and then potentially customer technical assistance with those customers to work through that upgrade process so they can make their decision in a not rushed fashion. The next concept we're considering is really focusing on improving indoor air quality and reducing the use of natural gas or burning natural gas in people's homes. We know induction again requires electrical upgrades and there is a unit that's available right now that does not require the two-twenty, two-forty electrical upgrades and it's fairly untested. It's a hundred and twenty volt induction stove. It has a battery inside the stove. It's pretty innovative. And there's some potential benefit to that battery that could be used for for load shifting and some other potential benefits that residents, that hasn't been tested yet. And this would be a pilot to test that out and allow us to kind of measure the the benefits of that battery relative to the price premium that the hundred and twenty volt induction stove cost. Next slide. And next, this is another class that we've talked about this strategic planning session, and this is the idea of doing what we can to bring in state funding to increase rooftop solar for low-income single-family homeowners. There is a program that the state offers called DAX SASH or the Disadvantaged Community Single Family Affordable Solar Home Program. It's administered by Grid Alternatives. One of the biggest barriers to seeing more DAX SASH incentives here in the region is roof repairs and panel upgrades. So there's a, doing some, some research with Grid. They indicate that approximately fifty percent of potential participants can't, based on the fact that they have a roof that doesn't, that will not hold a solar system or a panel that is not compatible with solar. And so that's an opportunity for us to come in and repair that roof and to bring in upwards of dollars in solar system benefits or state money to put that solar system on their home and unlock all the benefits that rooftop solar provides to single-family homeowners. Next, we've talked about smart thermostat in the past. We do have a partnership. It's more of a promotional partnership with Own Connect. This would kind of think about taking our involvement in the smart thermostat space to the next level. Right now, we know that there are smart thermostat incentives available for the lowest income customers in our territory. And those are those who are on the Care and Fair programs. There's still a big group of customers who are in that middle income space who don't qualify for the Care Fair incentives and therefore the smart thermostat incentives that could see significant benefit from having a smart thermostat installed. This would be to provide this smart thermostats and then pass the benefits, pass the, there's a lot of claims on bill reductions and this would be allow us to test the, those bill reductions for the recipients of the incentive. Next, this is a program we talked about, I think, strategic planning session. The County of LA has a similar program that's been highly successful, but nothing here in San Diego exists. The idea here is to look towards energy efficiency gains through K through twelve programs. So identifying areas where we can improve energy literacy, but do so through education programs, through schools. Next slide. Here's a program that we're considering and we're actually in the process of applying a grant specifically to target small businesses as either corner stores and potentially urban farms who are in our territory in food deserts. And there is a program from the California Department of Food and Agriculture that provides free refrigerators. But there's been limited participation to date in our territory. There's a number of reasons. There's a number of reasons why it may be, but but we identified that this is a good opportunity for us to kind of step in and apply for that money on behalf of our customers, our small business customers, and then help them through the process to actually get the refrigerator swapped out. Uh, in addition to just providing the free equipment or facilitating the free equipment from the state, we would provide energy audits to help them for other areas that they could reduce their bill or other areas where they could take advantage of incentive programs from energy efficiency incentive programs. And lastly, we are transportation modification is a focus of ours. We're thinking about the huge potential impacted increase of EVs may have to the grid. Not from a negative standpoint, from a positive standpoint, we really think about all these batteries in the garages as potential for us to manage and be a, I mentioned a benefit to us. We need to start first to understand and help people shift when they charge their vehicles. A managed charging program been done in Northern California. We do not have one here in in San Diego and this would be an opportunity for us to provide incentives either upfront or monthly incentives to help assist and inform people when they could charge their EV lowest cost or low carbon events. And like I said, these are fairly established, so there's a number of a number of manufacturers who offer apps and and various kind of mechanisms that would allow us to be involved in a managed charging program. This is pricing that we could stand up relatively quickly and the world targeting this year. That is a handful of concepts that we're considering. They next slide please. They kind of cover the gamut on purpose to show you that we are, we are considering all of the the program types that Nelson mentioned that we, that came out of our CPP. Some of them have funding identified, others we will have to look internally for the funding if it's approved in next year's budget. But the intent of the the agenda item day is to show that we are moving fast and we're working to get benefits to customers via programs as soon as we can. And we'll continue to work with our, the new CAC programs ad hoc committee in the weeds. And then of course, we'll continue to bring updates to the full CAC and to the board as needed. Who's my update?
All right, thank you, Colin. I should have mentioned at the last item that these to the advisory committee provide a lot of input in the community power plant. Want to certainly thank them for their good work as volunteers. And as I understand, they've also formed an ad hoc programs committee to help you develop additional concepts going forward. Any public comment?
There are no public comments.
On this, okay. This is a information item, so we don't need a motion, but if there's any comments or questions from the board?
With the chairman.
Yes.
I think they were right when they said they were in a hurry because they have eight pilot programs. And but then I think it's responsibly chosen. I like the educational component of it and really listening to what you know, is needing. I'm excited for this, you know, I mean, to be implemented on a staggered basis, just like your, your recommendation that I forward to the pilots. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments? Oh, yes, number.
So yeah, these are great and they look like we have a whole range of people within our county that would be eligible in the rural areas and the urban areas. It's it's really a great menu of options that we have. And so just wondering about we've committed to fifty percent of our programs to be implemented for communities of concern. And so in Intimitus, well, we need to wrap up our work real quickly to be able to qualify for some of those funds or some of these appear to be directly applicable to people who are already enrolled in. So that would be a little bit easier for for us in the city of Intimitus to direct them to these programs.
And now talking to us both, when you're at, you're saying wrap up your work.
Yeah, I understand it. Intimitus, we have to do a little bit more work to identify our communities of concern before we're eligible for that funding. And a lot of these seem to be directed towards folks who are a lower income. So we want to still be able to channel those benefits to those people even haven't done that work yet.
Yes, and there was a, as part of the community power plan for our public comment period, we revised our community concern definition. Previously was just on virus screen. Four dot oh top twenty five percent and we through feedback, we expanded that to include what the state refers to as priority population. So that's not only the town virus stream, it's also eighty fifteen fifty low income designated areas. And so with that expansion, it it includes communities of concern in each one of our member jurisdictions. Not to discourage, continue the work that you were already intending to do, but it does that expanding the definition does, I think, make programs available to make that the definition wider and includes more of our customers. Keep in mind that that fifty percent, there's still a full fifty percent is not, we don't have any specific targets to. So there's, there's still a chance for everyone participating in our programs, no matter what. Yeah.
Okay, awesome. And then this might be too detailed of a question, so feel free to pass on if it is. But some of these have some permitting requirements we would have to permit a city to do. So I hope that by the time we have these up and running that we're in a position as a city to say, you know, we've got a streamlined permit available for that or we're ready to accept this application because we've done a little bit of work on our end to understand what's being asked.
We can follow up on permitting that city of Encinitas is is ahead of the game on permitting, as are many of our cities here in our jurisdiction. But there's still work to be done on permitting. We haven't thought too hard about how we would be involved in helping member agencies that are permitting, but there's a big state effort or effort from the state. Help cities come along with clean energy technology permitting that we could have definitely follow up on, but Encinitas is in a good spot. Yeah.
Great, thank you. Uh, any other comments by the board? Just a couple on my part. One again, thank you for the good work and as a member of your mind, you're not wasting any time in terms of developing programs. And I know the next item is about budget, but it sounds like some of these programs will will fund through our revenue, but some of these you'll be looking for state grants or even federal grants to be able to.
I think it's safe that we look for external funding for all the programs. And when it makes sense for us to go after external funding, we will first and foremost. And when there's not funding that's appropriate or that we can get in a timely fashion, that's when we would look to the board to, we seek funding for internal funding.
Okay. Well, certainly look forward to updates as those programs get refined and grants are awarded and as we start developing new programs. But thank you for the very good work. And unless there's any objection, we'll just simply receive and file the pilot programs update. Thank you both. Okay, we'll now move on to item fifteen, presentation on the FY twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating budget. And again, this is an information item only, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to just take a moment, take a moment to and chairs our finance and risk management committee for any comments as it related to the meeting that took place on May eighteenth twenty twenty three. Mayor McCain.
Thank you, Dr. Washington. Staff for Senator preliminary draft of the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four operating budget to finance and risk committee. During the May eighteenth meeting on twenty twenty three, the committee members provided feedback and comments to staff on the item. The committee is supportive of this item and recommended advancing the item to the full board.
Thank you, Director McCain. Joining me for this presentation will be Tim Mclemott, our senior finance manager, and Cristo finance analyst. Next slide, please. So our budget development is guided by, or our budget overall is guided by six key principles. I'll highlight just a few for the sake of the directors and the public. We want to make sure that we maintain a responsible and sustainable budget that we ensure that we have sufficient funds available so that we're able to deliver on the service services that we provide to our customers. Want to make sure we continue on the trajectory of reserve building as commented by the programs team. Once we can achieve that milestone, we will look to provide, be in a position to provide a funding for programs. Uh, we want to make sure that we provide easy to understand a budget for both internal consumption and the public. And then lastly, we want to make sure that our budget development process prioritizes people, transparency and the communities that we serve. Next slide, please.
Hi, Kelly, I'm Dr. Timothy Mclemott, new manager at SEC. So just some key highlights for our budget this year. Uh, this is going to be the first full year where we'll have full phase one through enrollment. What that means is we'll have full revenues, have full load. So this is going to be our first real, I think, budget year. A couple more items here. We are planning to add very thoughtfully to our staff. So we're talking about adding twenty three people to go to fifty nine and in a very thoughtful way, which we'll get to in a few more slides. Kind of the last thing that we're trying to add here is a CIP or we're calling it a capital investment plan. Very similar to your jurisdiction and the CIP that you have. But kind of a way to organize some of the stuff that you heard from Colin earlier, some of the stuff that you heard from Byron and Morgan during strategic planning, so that'll be in the chat.
Thank you, Tim. This is a familiar slide or should be a familiar slide to the directors and possibly the public, if not just serving as a reminder of our overall budget development process from a timing perspective as incorporated into the budget policy that was approved. Previously approved by our board. So we are on track with the main presentation of the operating budget or proposed budget to the financial risk management committee or F R M C. Uh, and now coming to the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors for preview of the budget. Uh, and then the next steps, of course, will be to return to both the F R M C financial risk management committee and the board for final approval of the budget in June during those meetings for ultimate implementation by the beginning of our fiscal year July first twenty twenty four. Next slide, please. So very high level, this is a summary of the budget with respect to our total proposed net revenue and total expenses. And I would like to just direct some attention to the capital investment program where we are budgeting for fiscal year twenty twenty four four point two million, of which the two million will be set aside to support the pilot programs that our program team are referred to during that presentation. And then lastly, looking at where we land with regard to our reserve building. By the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, we are projecting that we will have four hundred sixty seven point three million in our reserves, which puts us at a at about one hundred sixty seven days cash on hand. And I'd just like to remind the public and the board that our strategic goal is to get to one hundred eighty days cash on hand. Next slide. This slide refers to the capital investment plan that Tim referred to in his highlight comments. And then looping this back to the programs that we're looking to implement and then visibility to the public of where we are with regard to our capital investment plan and the funding and the items that this this plan will support in terms of providing information to the programs team, the finance team, as well as the public. Next slide, please. This slide is a representation of the breakdown of what we've budgeted for fiscal year twenty twenty four. And again, just highlighting the customer pilot programs that will be funding this fiscal year to the tune of two, two million dollars. What this document will also do, it will provide the continued funding that will support various programs in future periods as as we roll into those periods and as the programs team roll out their respective programs. Next slide. In terms of reserve building and our budget, again, just high level where we'll land with with the proposed budget based on the most recent data that we have and our projections. So we are are building those reserves and we are getting close to what our targets are with regard to our strategic plan. So this is where we are projecting we'll land at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, based on this proposed budget. Next slide. This slide takes the summary just one step further in terms of granularity. Categorically breaking down where we fall within our budget categories. As you can see in this slide, professional services personnel, marketing and outreach, general administrative expenses as well as programs. Again, highlighting programs, you'll notice if you compare the fiscal year twenty twenty four proposed budget to the amended fiscal year twenty twenty three, that expense line item is reduced in fiscal year twenty twenty four, but essentially what's occurring here is is those funds are being reallocated to the capital investment plan that will be reflective in future years. Next slide, please. This slide is an update to what we've present, what we've previously presented in regard to our trajectory on reserve building. So again, by the end of fiscal year twenty twenty four, being at one hundred sixty seven days cash on hand, and we anticipate that we will actually hit that target by the end of fiscal year twenty fiscal year twenty twenty three will hit the ninety day threshold and then rolling forward to the one hundred eighty day trajectory around August of twenty twenty four. That's right. With regard to reserves, just a comparative analysis of where we fall with respect to other CCAs, our counterparts throughout the state. Uh, as you can see, again, we are targeting to hit our ninety days cash on hand. And once we hit that target, our reserves should be built to our our expenses at that time, excuse me, will be approximately two hundred fifty six point three million and the ninety day, the ninety day that the ninety day mark will occur, as I mentioned, sometime during possibly by the end of this week year twenty twenty three. Next slide, please. Tim referred to in his highlights, the thoughtful addition to staffing. This slide sort of lays that out by departments. And then also compares our staffing level to those of other CCAs, as you can see in this slide. Next slide, please. Again, continuing on the theme of comparative analyses, you'll see where we fall with respect to our net revenues, our non-energy costs, as well as our energy costs based on the number of customer accounts we serve through the end of this, as it relates to this fiscal year proposed budget. Next slide. That concludes my presentation of item fifteen.
All right, thank you, Dr. Washington, and thank you, Tim and Chris for that presentation. I'll note for the record that the beginning of that item that my chair lost member during the board meeting. Uh, so with that, differently, do we have any public comment?
There are no public comments.
All right. Again, this is an information item only. We will be taking a vote on the budget next month. But I'll turn it over to board members for any comments. And I want to thank Mayor Mayor McCain for the leadership on the committee and your opening comments on that. And board members wish to comment or any question if you have on the budget going forward? Okay, I don't see any. A couple of questions on my part. It sounds like, as you said, the current estimate is we're going to hit the hundred and eighty day. Well, we're by the end of FY twenty four, by June of FY twenty four, we're going to hit the one third sixty seven and then by August, we should hit the hundred and eighty. So that's pretty consistent with what we've been talking about. That's our goal, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, for the most part, I will note that as we update, we get updates on our pro forma. We work really closely with our consultant that assists us with coming up with those figures and we take it through a rigorous process. And so for the most part, we are pretty much on target with what we've talked about from a strategic planning perspective.
Great. Uh, and I believe the other change that we made for this budget is that we had typically only assumed one percent on collectibles, but we're actually, given the economic climate, we're bumping up to four percent, which.
That that's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. We wanted to make sure that we took a conservative posture in terms of budgeting for uncollectibles, particularly given the economic landscape, as you pointed out, as well as the the number of residential customers that could potentially be impacted by that in the next fiscal year.
And the four percent is dollars, not number of customers.
The four percent is or is a representation of dollars as it relates to gross, uh, gross revenue.
So I know the media typically talks about accounts, not dollars, so it can be confusing. Was there any comments? Yes, the member.
Um, just to point out, the CIP says their four point two or two million.
Just to point out, the C I P says their four point two or two million goes to pilot programs. I am glad that we are committed to making those programs work great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Seeing the other hands raised, again, without objection, we will receive and file this presentation. And again, we'll be bringing the budget for adoption next month. So to item sixteen, this is consideration to approve the San Diego Community Power Investment Policy. And once again, I'll turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to be able to Mayor McCann, who chairs the Financial Risk Management Committee.
Thank you, Dr. Washington. Staff presented a preliminary framework of the proposed investment policy to the Finance and Risk Management Committee during the March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. After reviewing questions and feedback from the committee, staff prepared a draft of the investment policy. F R M C received and reviewed the draft of the investment policy during the May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting. The F R M C committee members presented questions and the staff for the item. Staff appropriately responded to the questions presented. The committee is supportive of the item and recommended advancing it to the board for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor McCann. Next slide, please. The development of our investment policy was informed primarily by three different entity types. I'll refer to the mass. We did a review of our peer C C As. We also took a look at some of our member agencies and their investment policies. And then lastly, the models practices guide that is published by the C C A or California Community Choice Association that was, that was informed by several entities or several groups within those C C As throughout the state and overall objectives of this policy represented there within, as well as the investment types that are approved and prohibited, as well as controls that will that will guide the investment policy. And then lastly, the reporting as it relates to investments that we ultimately hope to make in this policy. The objective of this policy are essentially to make sure that we have a level safety as it relates to the principal preservation of those funds invested. Make sure that we maintain an appropriate level of liquidity to meet operating needs. Ensuring that we get a reasonable rate of market return without enduring excessive risk. And then making sure that we also provide a level of care as it relates to those investments. Overall, the investment policy is informed by the California Government Code. And that's the framework in which the investment policy resides. Next slide, please. This slide presents the acceptable investment types. As you can see on this slide, there are several. Next slide, please. This slide essentially takes a look at the investment parameters as it relates to those acceptable investments, primarily from length of time in which we would hold those investments, as well as concentration as it relates to overall portfolio management. And then also concentration from a perspective of where we would make those investments under individual issuers. And then lastly, some credit ratings were applicable that will guide those investments as well. This slide is a reflection of those prohibited investments considered to be high risk. And again, those are informed by the California Government Code. In terms of internal controls, next slide, please. So we have taken a look at the California Government Code. And in addition to those imposed as it's embedded in the policy, some additional control parameters, just to ensure that, excuse me, that we are making sure that we are being prudent with the investments and that all the necessary controls to make sure that those investments are safe and sound are reflected in the self-imposed controls as indicated by the vault in this slide, as you can see. Next slide. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation for the investment policy that we accept this policy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Washington. Kimberly, do we have any public comments? Thank you, Dr. Washington. Do we have any public comment?
No, we do not have any public comments.
So this is a request for action. So I'll turn it over to board members for comments and a motion. Member McCann.
If we don't have any questions or comments, I'd be happy to make the motion to approve the San Diego Community Power Investment Policy. So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
I will take the opportunity just to ask a couple of quick questions. There, in addition to the prohibited investments, there's also a question about ones that do not align with mission, vision, goals. Talk a little bit about how that may be ascertained.
So in terms of the investments as it ties to our mission goals and our values, we would seek to, with this policy, as we engage with investment advisors, be laid out for them what those investments that would contribute mostly contribute or contribute to our mission vision.
And I guess the most obvious question, we're not going to be investing in any fossil fuels?
That's a, that's a great question, Mr. Chair. No, we will not be investing in any fossil fuels.
So, and I appreciate the conservative approach to protect those reserves that are hard fought to develop and make sure, but a little bit of growth in there to work for our customers. So without any other comments, we do have motion by Member McCann and a second by Member Yimani. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? That passes six zero, no, seven zero. Yeah. All right. Again, thank you, Dr. Washington, for your good work and everybody that worked on this investment policy. And again, thank you, Member McCann, for sharing the committee's view of this.
Thank you, Chair.
With that, we'll move on to item seventeen. This is approval of the, ready for this? Interim Compliance Plan for the California Energy Commission's Load Management Standards. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gunther to present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, directors. Yes, it is a mouthful, such as the life of regulatory analyst. And my name is Stephen Gunther, and next slide. So to provide some background, the California Energy Commission adopted updates to the State of the Management Standard last October with the intention to encourage load flexibility through rate design and pricing. And as a part of this, they developed a series of requirements that apply to the large IOUs publicly owned utilities, as well as what they define as large C C As, which is obviously one of the largest, so we fit into that category. The requirements include developing more dynamic rates that change at least hourly to reflect grid cost and G H G emissions. Maintaining up-to-date rates in the database of the, another mouthful, but market-informed demand automation server, which I'll just refer to as Midas. And as part of that, educating customers about its time-dependent rates and automation technologies. I did want to note that leading up to the adoption of these standards, S D C P worked with Cal C C A to raise some concerns. One being some jurisdictional concerns is, you know, you all as our board are a rate approving body. So you should be the ones dictating the rates, as well as some implementation barriers we saw with current data systems and current billing systems that we have to share with S D G N E. Nevertheless, C C adopted the standards and now we are working through that process with them. The next slide, please. The current standards outline these compliance requirements in a phased approach. The first deadline being a July first, just coming up in a in a month and a few days for the uploads to the Midas database. And I'll get into, we're hoping and expect this deadline to move. That's part of the purpose of this interim compliance plan. But to help with the implementation details, the Energy Commission has convened a working group to go through the functional requirements. And S D C P staff has been heavily engaged in these working groups. There have been seven meetings so far. Next slide, please. So the working group meetings have been very fruitful in moving forward with some of these implementation details, but they've also illuminated quite a few questions that implementing these standards and specifically uploading to Midas still are outstanding. So the Midas protocols have not yet been finalized. It's the proverbial flying the plane while trying to build it. There's also critical implementation questions that are still unanswered, including how to deal with unbundled versus bundled rates. What rate modifiers would be included? What data granularity should be used? So all very important questions when trying to build systems for a database. The A P I or application programming interface requirements haven't been finalized. And again, that makes it difficult for our team to develop automated systems and would thus require a manual upload, which is a labor-intensive process. So with all these outstanding questions, S D C P staff has determined from our review that uploading all of our existing time-dependent rates into Midas by the July first deadline wouldn't be cost-effective for our customers nor technologically feasible until these issues are resolved. So we have not, you know, been quiet about this. We've been working with the trade association, Cal C C A, to work directly with Energy Commission to inform staff why there are a few barriers that are outstanding. We've informed discussions with Commissioner McAllister. And we also joined a request for extension of the Midas upload July first deadline that was jointly filed with the IOUs and the thirteen large C C As that are subject to these requirements. Just last Friday, the Energy Commission issued a proposed order in response. And that would be voted out to be a final order in the next week's C C. This proposed order denied the full extension that was sought by the joint is of nine months, but is, does extend the July first deadline out to August first, which is hopeful, but even more helpful, they did in writing clarify what some of the responsibilities for C C As including some of that unbundled versus bundled rate questions. So we'd only be responsible for our portion of the rates being uploaded. Initially, there was discussion of we would need to combine before uploading with S D G N E's section of the rates, and that just adds a lot of complications. So that was considered a big win in this proposed order, which, you know, we expect not many changes now and when that gets voted out next week. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. This is the slide I should be on. Yes, sorry. So I may have got ahead of myself. So yeah, because of the kind of awkward timing of the proposed order coming out last week, it's still not final, and we're still analyzing what the implications of those changes would be. We're still bringing to the board a recommendation of approval would be an interim compliance plan. And the reason that it's an interim compliance plan is the way the regulations are written, the only way we can modify compliance with the L M S requirements are through this compliance plan. But that plan is not due till April first of twenty twenty-four. So we developed an interim compliance plan which would extend the deadlines for complying with that July first deadlines, which was the initial deadline in the standards. We're hoping that's not necessary. We believe that we could meet the new August first deadline, if that is what the commission approves, again, with the additional clarifications they made in that proposed order. But we thought it'd be prudent to continue to still bring this to the board to get sign off on an interim compliance plan, given the timing that we'd have to comply with the July first deadline and our next board meeting would be late June. So we would like to get this approval by the board now. And this way, if need be, if our staff determines that we can't meet the month extension that we have this interim compliance plan that we submit to the C C. So that is staff's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gunther, for your good work on this and trying to navigate the regulatory waters. Where dates are set and they're not ready, which makes it difficult for us to be responsive. But Kimberly, any public comment?
No, there are no public comments.
All right. This is seeking approval by the boards. I'll turn it over for the comments and only the motion.
Question, Mr. Chairman. They want us to comply, but they're not ready. So we're the part first before the horse. Oh, I.
We'll do a interim card before.
So I don't know how to move forward with this, Mr. Chairman.
Well, there's a two-page in your packet. There is a two-page draft interim plan which I would suspect Mr. Gunther to have given some thought about what an interim plan would look like and uphold our place, so to speak. Pending them actually setting a hard deadline, which we may or may not be able to achieve, again, given where they've moved quickly. So again, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Gunther, but you're asking for the board's consideration and approval of this interim two-page plan. So that we would have that and you would file that to the regulatory agency?
Correct, Mr. Chair. The interim plan, all it does really is extend the Midas July first deadline. In our plan, we outline twelve months since the protocols are finalized as to create wiggle room since they're still finalizing some of those protocols. And then, you know, in the plan that as all the other compliance components that you saw in that timeline, those would all be developed in our compliance plan, which is due on April first of next year. So this is really just a request to submit this. We'd have to file this within thirty days of approval from the board with the C C to extend the deadline of that July first, just that very first compliance deadline is really the only kind of short-term thing we're working on right now.
Question. Thank you. So Midas is the data entry, but it's not ready, but we have to be prepared. So then when it's ready, we're ready to input. Is that correct?
So there would be disagreement from the Energy Commission. They believe it's ready, but you know, they don't work with rates and the unbundled rates are a little more, I think, complicated than anticipated because we need to work closely with the investor on utilities to determine what rates need to be uploaded. So from their perspective, which is why they only gave the one-month extension, they think it'd be ready for upload. But, you know, our team has looked into the details of uploading and yes, we can do a manual upload. It's possible, but we really want to do this the right way and effectively so we can automate this process moving forward. So that's where that discrepancy on some of these outstanding questions of whether or not we should extend a deadline so we could do it in a more cost-effective manner, rather than do a manual process.
I think we have to be ready, Mr. Chairman. Let them not be ready.
Our part. So I take that as a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Remember Yimani. And do I have a second? Remember Agiri? Yeah, and I think it's important to emphasize, you're doing everything and comply with the orders. For some practical reasons, what gets in the way of that? And this is just a kind of a stopgap.
Yes, as I mentioned, we think with the new clarifications that we received just this Friday a few days ago, we believe we should be able to meet that August first deadline. But again, that is a proposed order. We anticipate it will be voted by the commission, but you know, we don't want to make policy decisions based on officials who hasn't been finalized.
Fair enough. Okay. Well, again, thank you for your very good work and everybody that assisted you. We do have a motion to move the staff recommendation by Member Yimani and second by Member Agiri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Now we'll go on to item eighteen. Approval of long-term market offered sales conference. Approval of long term market offered sales confirmation for purchase of long term. Bundle R P F energy from S D V N E. And authorize the CEO to execute the agreement. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Bossberg.
Thank you, Chair. Never mouthful of title here. All my regulatory analysts for support sometimes. Energy procurement in California, apparently. As as anything else, so surprised. Anyway, so we're back with another long term contract under the B A M O on period allocation, market office process. Running through business by the P U C and then run by each of three utilities. So this presentation and the contract in the packet and most of what I'm about to say hopefully sounds familiar. Review for a similar deal with P G N E. We participate also in this P G N E's market offer solicitation and have been awarded. A contract with government, so have that to review tonight. In case some of the details from last month, it's quite again, it won't be a pop quiz, but I will review. Some of the details here as well, but the voluntary allocation. Market over process, again, very complex, bring up where world we live in, but this is for. P C I A eligible resources, so that's the power charge. As the end of our customer's paid utilities for. On racks that were committed or across the. Committed by the departure to C C A service, those resources. There's been a long, very long process of getting the activities from those resources allocated to our customers. So again, for renewable energy, we have this process designed finally, finally, first with the application process. Then the marketing offer process in the market offer. First, we had the short term market offer process now and the long term market offer process. And through that, we have two contracts for you and the P G one we brought to previously and now the C G one. So that's the the process we have been through and it's directed by B U C and very thorough proceeding. Or all be very thorough, P U C proceeding to do this process. And over seeing by any of them, our layers and all three areas at the same time. Next slide please. Thank you. So a an overview here again of the portfolio that we're discussing, this is for category one. So button over renewable and safe renewable energy from wind and solar resources. S D G contract of these resource on behalf of our customers before they land. And so it can be the high level summary here in March. For for direction and for program. Yet design in in March, they released solicitation and probably submitted bids and then maybe we were awarded. And we participated both P G N E and S D G parallel P G N E's got their contracts to us and their awards to us a little sooner. So we were putting that last month. But S D G's, that's genius. Next slide please. So the contract summary, the start date is kind of uncertain. Based on when we sign sign the contract, submit it back as you have them sent and submit the P U C for approval. But we expect deliveries to start when it was covered by the end of this year. The end date is in twenty fourteen, so as you will all still be here, coming back to review the forms this time at the end of. The end of the delivery period and anyways, the end of the contracts for the those P C I eligible researchers. The structure we discussed before is index plus renewable energy premium. And this is I think it's a fun this last time, but pricing and the portfolio election quantity, total volume that we expect to receive is all confidential. The pricing, of course, goes market sensitive and then the the volumes and quantity because S D G is still completing the market office solicitation process. And has yet to file this with with the P U C. Will note that it's a very, very small slice of our portfolio and. I ended the price, well, also first of all, the price is. Expected to provide value and certainty as a fixed price and then to our customers and then value certainty or customers over the period of this. Agreement and slicing and both election quantity and generation are very small and smaller than the volumes we expect to receive from the P G N E deal from. Last month, we did review this with the energy contracts working group. Chair cover or we can't write the comments of my summary as well. I'd welcome that. But pending that, that's going to be summary here, but the the contract is in the in the agenda packet, pending recommendations to. For C E S. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bossberg, for that good work and trying to provide some clarity about what all its needs for. The energy field clearly is not designed to be crystal clear. Kimberly, do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
All right. Perhaps I'll start a little bit and I'll turn over to number again. We both said on the energy contracts working group, we did hear a little bit deeper presentation, not too much deeper. But this is part of a very complex series of acquiring. Power agreements, it's the the chart that we saw in our strategic planning section. The result of this one is literally a very, very thin line. When we look at what we're trying to achieve. But it is important in terms of what we're trying to do and these are resources that are available for us to secure down. At good value. I I think that was the right word to use. On this, so. Met all the criteria that this complex determination of resources. Really gets into, and so I was satisfied with it. So remember, McCann, did you want to add anything?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate your work on the subcommittee as well. Appreciate your presentation. And I think it really sums up that this is a good value for San Diego Community Power. And with that, I will make the motion to approve the item.
We have any comments or questions by other members or we need a second to the motion?
Second.
Not seen any other comments or hands raised, so we have a motion by number hand to approve the staff recommendation. And second by member parent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours. And that also passes unanimously. That's the last action item for our consideration tonight. We'll go to the results and I will turn it over to our C E O. Aaron Brooks, do you have a report for something?
I do, Chair. Right, so I get to talk about some of the fun things that we've been doing this past month. S C C P team, many members are our board and several C A C members. Were out in full force at last week's annual Palisance C A industry event. Friends in downtown San Diego that lasted several days. It was wonderful to see so many of you in person alongside our colleagues from other C C As. And also at the elected officials luncheon, so. That and also just a few thanks. This was again incredible event. We had, we supported it. Quite a bit. So thanks to Chair LaCava providing remarks at the conference and kicking off our official. Event in Arlington, all our board members who joined us and our C A C Chair Eddie Price. He presented in a panel discussing the importance of our communities. And encouraged our fellow C C As to adopt the term communities of concern. Which went, which was very well received and also a huge shout out to our staff for whether that was. Running registration, stuffing swag bags, coordinating speakers, leading breakout discussions. Everybody really, really helped out and I was really grateful for all the behind the scenes work that went into. That event. It was a huge success and everybody really enjoyed it. Also, this week, we hosted a delegation from Japan at our office. In coordination with the San Diego Diplomacy Council and the Energy Policy Initiative Center or E P C. Here at the University of San Diego, they were invited to the U S by the U S Department of State. And the U S Embassy in Tokyo, as well as the U S Consulate General in Sapporo. And it was just really great to have them here at our offices to build relationships with the San Diego Council. The Energy Policy Initiative Center and to really share more about us and what we do and our mission. And this was really part of our larger vision to inspire others around the country and around the globe to embark on this journey as well. And then on April twenty ninth, we sponsored and participated in the first ever Spring Valley Day. With over fifteen hundred attendees, a really family friendly event. We had an information table with resources. We hosted a children's group activity. Set and interacted with guests that were coming from all for all ages this last month. This weekend, we are also sponsoring the San Diego Community. At the, on the San Diego Community Power stage at the North Park. In North Park, the North Park Music Festival in partnership with the North Park Main Street Association. And so on Saturday, May twenty seventh at twelve forty five P M, Cheryl LaCava and I will be there, will be flipping the switch. Our typical ceremony to recognize several North Park businesses that are making the switch and powering up. To become Power One Hundred Champions. So we're excited about that. And I'm told this event will feature some really amazing and up and coming Southern California bands in San Diego. So y'all do get a chance to get out there, enjoy the event. We will be there. And that's that's it for my report this month. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Karen. And yeah, kudos to all the community power staff that we've played host for this. The Cal C C A coming down, y'all did an amazing job. It was good energy. I think we had, there was over six hundred folks from up and down the state that turned out really, really great. That well attended, so really important. So with that, our general counsel, Mr. Byron, do you have any? Mr. Baron. I have nothing to report. Okay, thank you very much. Directors, do you have any comments about, yes, ma'am, or Gary?
Just a general comment again about the the conference. Great job on organizing. It was really impressive. There were so many people there and I had a lot of personal takeaways that I think are, you know, just got my. Mental juices flowing so for what we can do here locally. And I gotta say, all seriousness aside, y'all had the best lag. Any conference I've ever been to, so thank you.
Right. Not seen any, oops, not seen any other comments. That ends our, the public portion of our agenda. We will now turn into closed session. Which means we have to ask all the good members in the public to leave, oops. Oh, public comments. See, I almost forgot again. I see the title page and I just skipped the whole thing. So we are going to go into closed session and before we go into closed session. We have to entertain any public comment on the closed session items. Those are the two items we will be discussing.
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, thank you. I thank you to my staff who was waving wildly in the back row there. So with that, now we will convene in the closed session. And when we complete closed session, we will reconvene and open session again and report out on any action. That we take. So we'll take a few moments break. I mean, the public opportunity and opportunity for the recording to be stopped and the Zoom session closed.
Yes.
Okay, we're back in open session again and I will attest that all seven board members are still in attendance. Uh our council, is there any reportable action out of closed session?
There's no reportable action, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, that brings us to the end of our agenda and I appreciate everybody's participation. We are adjourned until the next regular meeting to the Board of Directors, standing of community power on June twenty second, two thousand and twenty three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.